Committee of the House called back to order. My colleagues, we will begin with the amendment identified as AB 204-ALS as Senator Shelton, LT 1 or L 11-21P2. And that is in reference to changing the numbers. I hope all my colleagues can see it. Senator Shelton, I'd like to speak on your amendment, please.
Sidois masi, Mr. Chair, be very quick. This is a technical amendment to correct the article that was named in the title, as was brought up by one of our colleagues during the discussion. Article 16 already exists, so it would be the following article, Article 17, and then to also correct the sections within the act. And it's also to allow for legal to make other technical changes to the bill with regards to numbering.
All righty, then, my colleagues would like to speak to this amendment. I see no hands of any objection to this amendment. There being none, amendment passes. Colleagues, we will now go on to the next amendment. The next amendment should be AB 204-TMT, that's for the Speaker, L 23P6. We're going to go in the sequence of how the amendment was sent, my colleagues, so stay with the flow and we'll just move along. Madam Speaker, you have your amendment, please. All the four amendments were also passed out, so you should all have a copy. Madam Speaker, your amendment is on the, no more than two meetings annually?
Okay, yeah, I have several. Sorry, I'm trying to find the one you're talking about.
No problem, but you have the one that the council shall hold no fewer than two meetings annually. That's the amendment.
Okay, thank you. I had them arranged by page number, but I'll go in this order, Mr. Chair. So the first amendment is page six, line 23. Subsection E of the bill currently says the council shall hold no fewer than two meetings annually, and I'd like to add the words, "subject to the provisions of 5 GCH, Chapter 8, open government law." I think it's very critical, and you see this across the states. One of their primary concerns is the input of the public as to how this money will be spent and which programs, you know, if we're deciding on different types of treatment, different types of prevention, which ones does the public and the different people who are not on this agency or this commission or this council, that they can also have input? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Does any of my colleague like to speak to this amendment? I see no hands. Are there any objection? There being none, this amendment passes. Colleagues, we're moving now to the next amendment. It's also with the Speaker. It's L 21P4. Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Line 21, page 4, currently reads, "The Office," subsection D, "The Office of the Attorney General shall promptly remit any such revenue to the Treasurer of Guam." I'd like to change the words, "any such revenue," to "all money, payments, or other things of value to the Treasurer of Guam." This is actually an amendment that was suggested by Legislative Council in their review of the bill. It matches another section of the bill where it doesn't talk about revenue. It talks about money, payments, or other things of value. So just to match those two sections.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Does any of my colleague like to speak to this amendment? Are there any objection to this amendment? There being none, amendment passes. We will now move to the next amendment. I think, Madam Speaker, you have one more for now. L 26, page 5.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, so there's been, the amended bill put on the floor added an additional member to the council, so the council total changed to, and I think it's now an even number, and so they added the public defender. So I would suggest to just remove one member so that they continue with an odd number of votes so that there will not result in a tie. And my proposal is to remove the administrative courts, the judiciary. I think, you know, like, we don't have GPD on this council who's dealing with drugs, of course, or opioid addiction. We don't have customs, and I think if we're going to remove any of these, you know, let's remove the judiciary who has a completely separate role in, you know, handling addiction and handling drugs on Guam. That's my proposal, just to remove that section four.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleagues, does anyone like to speak to this amendment? I see no hands. Are there any objection? Madam Shelton, you would like to speak to the amendment?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I do have an objection to this amendment. I think the judiciary is an important member of what will become the Opioid Recovery Advisory Council. They do administer the Guam Adult Drug Court and would provide a valuable input regarding fund expenditures so that they will support community-based or diversion programs that reduce the likelihood of criminal justice involvement for individuals who have or are at risk or having a substance abuse disorder. So I think they are a valuable member of what will be the Opioid Recovery Advisory Council. So I do raise an objection. However, I do appreciate the point of needing an odd number of voting members to the council, and so if, maybe we can take a moment's recess to figure that part out.
All right, let's take a couple minutes recess and folks can speak. Thank you.
Okay, here we go. Committee of the House called back to order. Senator Shelton, you are the last to comment. You're still objecting to the amendment, right? Okay. Anyone else like to speak? Senator Tello.
Si, just, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I stand in full support of this amendment, you know, to provide that odd number that's needed. And there's a reason why you have an area like such as the Attorney General's Office who exempt themselves from the voting member, you know, as an office that basically goes to, you know, convicts individuals or represents individuals, especially in drug cases. The same thing applies when you go to the judiciary. And this is probably the reason why it was recommended that the Attorney General's Office is a member, but a non-voting member. So, you know, you're putting these two together hand in hand, which has the same reasoning as to why that they're not a voting member. So the judiciary is probably the best person to take out. I mean, you know, I offered to the sponsor of the legislature to take out actually the minority leader because there's already a representation from the legislature in here through the Speaker's Office, a representation. So, you know, I offered that amendment to exclude that. But, you know, of course, it, she said, was not needed at all. You know, we wanted to keep it. But, no, seriously, if you think about it, if you look at the representation on this board, we have a representation from the legislature. And it's usually, and it's common, that it's always the Speaker that appoints or is appointed to in a board. So if this amendment, well, let me see. If it doesn't pass, Mr. Chair, how do we then move forward in creating another amendment? Because if amendment does not pass, right? And to adjust it, when you said that only amendments on the floor that are in the Google Drive, how do we approach that scenario?
Are you done already on your comment for the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Madam Speaker, would you like to close on your amendment? Before we...
Yes, briefly. Thank you very much, yes. Again, I think we need to adjust the board. Of course, the numbers under subsection B are wrong. It's not 10 members and nine voting members anymore. It's now 11 members and 10 voting members, okay, in this bill as is. So I'm proposing that we bring it back down to 10 and 9 by removing the judiciary. And again, I think the judiciary just has a different role when it comes to the enforcement of drug use on Guam. They're not the service providers. Well, they do provide some services, but that's not their role. We want, by this money that's coming in under this settlement, to boost up these service providers. The actual treatment centers, the behavioral health, the Department of Public Health, GMH. And I do not agree to remove any of the members appointed by the legislature, because in other states, that's who serves on these councils, the legislature and the governor. They decide how this money will be spent. We are allowing these service providers to also, you know, chime in with their expertise. And so I support that. But I think, yeah, if we need to remove one, I'm suggesting that we remove this one who has a different role in this process. We are relying on them to enforce drug laws.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleagues, there is an objection. All in favor of this amendment proposed by the Speaker? Please raise your right hand. One, two, three. Amendment fails. Do you want me to count one more time? Right, all in favor, please raise your right hand or left, either one. One, two, three, four, five. Amendment fails. We proceed now to the next amendment. The next amendment is... Next amendment is by Senator Shelton. You have an amendment designation of the OAG as a single agency. Line 13, page 9.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is a simple amendment to strike the words or the Uniform Deceptive Trade Practices Act. This was an oversight during the committee process to delete this, but it was deemed unnecessary since Guam does not have a Uniform Deceptive Trade Practices Act. So it's not necessary in the bill.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Does anyone like to speak to this amendment? I see no hands, any objection? There being none, amendment passes. We'll now move to the next amendment. Next amendment is introduced by Senator Nelson. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This amendment lies in page 8, line 21. And earlier in the discussion during the Committee of the Hall, we brought up the question on whether the victims of opioid or substance use disorders involving opioids will be fairly compensated. And so this amendment includes that the council would provide direct compensation to victims of substance abuse, substance use disorders.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Does anyone like to speak to this amendment? Senator Brown. And then you'll be followed by the Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I mean, I just have a question with regards to this, if the author would yield. Because, I mean, if we're going to have the council provide direct compensation to victims, I mean, we have no idea how many victims are involved, what the amounts are going to be, and whether or not, how this money's going to be distributed between this and the other intended purposes of this legislation, to be able to provide treatment, outreach, education. The list can be endless on people that feel that they're victimized, who've become addicted to opioids. So, I mean, is that something now the local jurisdiction's going to address versus normally you have individuals that directly sue these companies? Because I just don't see how, I mean, even though it sounds like a lot of money, it's over quite a period of time. And goodness, what's the amount you can sue with attorneys now? That could be an endless amount of money. That could raid the entire fund. Would there be anything left for the educational outreach and treatment and care that certainly I would want to see those that have been victimized with opioid abuse to receive versus direct compensation? Because this opens a whole other, whole other list of concerns that would be raised by passing this particular amendment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Nelson, do you yield to the question posed by Senator Brown?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that question. The amendment is just to add an additional topic for the council to decide upon. So it's not saying that you are going to do this, but we want to ensure that it is discussed. Other states are discussing, or other states are already looking to pay out the victims of substance abuse disorders through this opioid litigation settlement. And so this is just encouraging the council to also look at the possibilities, and then they could deem the left or right limits on how that process will go.
Senator Brown, does that suffice?
Not really. I mean, I'm not an attorney, but in our litigious society, I mean, I can see attorneys filing for undefined amounts. And I think this would be a distraction from really, if we're intending to, you know, look at these funds to provide the type of treatment outreach, which to me, I see more as a priority than individual compensation. Some may argue that's more important. I don't agree. I mean, people do choose to take drugs. Like people choose to drink. Maybe they consider it a disease. I don't know. But people choose to do that. But we're not going to have the opportunity, even with the amounts that have been received, to address everything we'd like to see in this intended legislation, and then open a door, which if I were an attorney representing my client, I'd look at this as an opportunity to sue the commission. If this is a source of funding that my client can receive compensation, certainly I can receive compensation attorney, I'd do it. Because we're not defining what those amounts would be versus if these individual parties were suing directly a company. That's a little different versus money that's been set aside for settlement here in Guam. So I would have reservation with regards to this. Certainly, I'd like to see how other states, but other states I don't doubt are getting far more money than what Guam's going to receive. So I do have reservation, opening up the door with regards to this. If the intent is to address outreach, certainly the need for treatment is there in our community. And I don't even think what we're providing is going to fully address that and everything else this legislation so far has outlined that it wants to address. So I really have reservation with this undefined amount that the commission and the government could be sued for. And then now we almost carry the burden of what these companies that provide these type of drugs, that becomes a burden of the government of Guam and this commission. And I really don't have an interest in opening that up if really our intent is to help those that have become addicted and those that need treatment and those that need edu... Especially for our young children, those that need educational outreach. I would rather see that than opening up this door that I think will create substantial challenges to the commission to provide funding for this and everything else that's been put on the table with regards to this legislation.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Would you be then objecting to the amendment? You would?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? If not, I'll ask Senator... I pause. Speaker, you wanted to speak, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to see if, you know, this is something that's done in other states, in the ones that have passed legislation, and I can't find any so far. But, because it's different, you know. Under subsection H, pages 7 and 8, it's very clear that the purposes and the priorities are going to be evidence-based, youth-focused, public health education and prevention campaigns, healthcare services, public education campaigns to reduce stigma, best practices for addressing substance use disorders, information on how to locate services that reduce the adverse health consequences associated with substance use disorders, or provide treatment for substance use disorders. So the treatment for substance use disorders is provided under section 2 and under subsection 3. It says to provide substance use disorder treatment and early recovery programs for youth and adults. And it, you know, talks about screening, co-disorders, family involvement, case management, all the details of how you want to treat substance use disorders. Subsection 4 is counseling services. Subsection 5, housing. Subsection 6, community-based or diversion programs to reduce the likelihood of criminal justice involvement for those at high risk. Number 7, programs for pregnant women and parents, new parents. Subsection 8, vocational and educational training for those at risk. I like these programs. These programs are going to be set up for all members of the community. They're going, we're going to use this money? Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm trying to imagine. It looks like the intent of the bill was to cover all of the things that somebody who is a victim of substance use disorder might need. They're going to need all of these things that are already listed. Treatment, housing, counseling, diversion programs, you know, all kinds of programs. And so, yeah, I also questioned the providing direct compensation, because I think we're opening up a can of worms that has not been fully vetted yet on this direct compensation. We have a victims' compensation program, and even the definition of the victim, right? Is it the victim of the crime that was involved? Or victims of substance use disorder? That's, I don't know. We have a victims' compensation fund that is operating well and also managed by the Attorney General's Office. So I don't know. I'm just trying to figure the use of the cash versus, you know, what these other subsections were, look like they're going to take care of the whole person. They're going to put them in housing, give them safe ways to divert themselves, you know, use of their time, treatment services, counseling, everything. So, yeah, I don't want that money to be diverted with, if we don't know how much this is going to cost. And I don't, I guess I'm trying to figure the purpose of giving cash instead of these types of programs. I fully support giving treatment to those victims of substance use disorders, but I think it's covered already by the other subsections. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Does anyone else like to speak to the amendment? Senator Shelton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I offer my support to this amendment. This is an item for us to add, an additional point for consideration for this council to act on. So it is a program that can be considered. Direct compensation for victims of opioid abuse. And, you know, this is not being specified in this amendment, but the entire intent of creating this advisory council and this bill to ensure that funds are used in the best way possible for those affected by opioid abuse and substance abuse disorder is for us to not only limit damage to our community from opioid and drug use, but it's also to right the wrongs that opioid abuse and the, that this epidemic has caused in the community. So direct compensation is one way for us to consider righting some of those wrongs. And so I stand in support of this amendment.
Thank you. Senator Tello.
Si, just, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, I was looking at this even before seeing this amendment over the time. By the way, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing us that extra time to provide our amendments and really look at this legislation thoroughly. And when I was going to this section, and going back to what was spoke about yesterday, or the day before yesterday, when the Attorney General was here during our session, and asking, trying to get clearer on the $10 million, up to $10 million that's going to be appropriated to Guam or given to Guam, awarded to Guam, but within an 18-year span, 18 years. And if you do that math, Mr. Chair, you're coming up with only 555,556. That's it. You know, to spend yearly. And we know through public health, we know through GMH, we know through, you know, Guam Behavioral Wellness, you know, they need this funding, especially when it comes to the types of care or education services that are provided, which they usually always asking for additional funding from the general fund. So $555,000 a year is really not that much. It's not that much funding to start giving it directly. And then when I was looking at this, when it said, "and not limited to," I think when Ms. Titanow was telling us she's not sure exactly on some of the guidelines about this money, she clearly stated to one of our senators, especially on the 151570, was not quite clear. Even on the administrative indirect cost was also not clear. What I'm concerned about is incorporating that language. I understand, "and not limited to," but it all boils down to one thing. We are going to be provided guidelines on how to spend this funding. And when that time comes, we'll have a clearer picture on where we can spend this funding. But so far, you know, without this amendment included, so far the Attorney Generals had looked at this and said, "yes, this is exactly what they're seeing that is coming forth and from other jurisdictions." So I too, I have to stand in rejection of this amendment too, only for that sake. But in the event, if the rules and regulations come down on how to expend this funding and it incorporates this language for a direct cost, then that's something that the council will have the authority to recommend on providing assistance to, if the rules and regs, you know, require that. But we won't know again. Again, we won't know all those answers, because even the Attorney General is not sure. But I, so I understand the importance of this amendment for some people out there that could use it, but at this point, it's best to be safe. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tello. Senator Perez, would you like to comment on this amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question for the proffer of the amendment. So it says substance use disorders. So does that open it up to, other than opioid substance abuse?
Senator Nelson, do you yield to the question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Opioid use is a substance abuse disorder. And right now, we're focusing, if you look at the bill, everything is focused on the substance use disorder, specifically for this opioid settlement. So all the other provisions or recommendations in the bill, we reiterate it as the substance use. So to keep it in order with the content of the bill, that's how we framed the amendment.
Thank you. Senator Perez, does that suffice?
I guess that actually brings to light, perhaps, maybe that language needs to be defined further, because, you know, the interpretation is, you know, could be up for a legal challenge. So I think the bill perhaps, maybe...
Just a point of information, Mr. Chair. This bill was vetted through the Attorney Gen...
I'm not yet done, sorry.
I'm putting a point of information.
Point of privilege, please. I'm not finished.
Okay, please. There, continue, please, Senator Perez.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, I guess, you know, as we're vetting this, I mean, this is a continual, continuous vetting process. So, I mean, just looking at from an objective perspective, you know, could this language be further strengthened to, you know...
Are you referring to the amendment or the bill itself?
Well, I think this amendment, plus, you know, now that we're, now that, you know, the language is used throughout the bill, you know, perhaps that could be strengthened, because, you know, it's, you know, it could come to a legal challenge where...
All right.
You know, the substance use disorder is actually much, the money could be used for other purposes. So, I mean, that's a potential challenge, I think. It's, you know, I think it's just, just to tighten the language, perhaps.
All right. Do you have anything else you'd like to speak on this amendment?
Yeah, so when I saw this amendment initially, I thought, you know, it's a good idea, right? And then just hearing the dialogue just now, and, you know, looking at the context of the bill, you know, what's, you know, the use of these funds, according to what's written in this amended bill, you know, I see that it will fulfill many of the purposes that this particular amendment aims to do. So, and, you know, perhaps, you know, the, you know, hasn't been, we don't fully understand the implications of this particular amendment, you know, whether it would affect the, you know, I guess the broader distribution to the society, you know, if all the funds are being used for one, perhaps, direct compensation. It's, you know, potential that, you know, the compensation, all that funds that are coming in could potentially be directed to one case. So that's my concern about this. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Anyone else like to speak? Senator Mullen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm considering the amendment to provide direct compensation to victims of substance use disorders. I'd just like to address the question to the author of the amendment, and I'm looking at it as something that folks are, who have these disorders, because of what the bill is trying to support on the education and process of the opioid addiction, that these folks may need some assistance in just kind of getting started back up. I'm wondering if also the intent would be like, not to pay them for the pain and suffering, but kind of some sort of leniency as the council, the advisory council feels fit, if these folks may have, are completing probation or coming out of parole, to help them start while they go through these different programs that the Opioid Prevention and Treatment Act is trying to establish. So something to help them get back on their feet as part of this rehabilitation program using the opioid money that we will be receiving. So the author of the bill, I'm sorry, the author of the amendment can clarify that if that's a possible intent. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Nelson, do you yield to the question? And maybe he needs to repeat it. Could you repeat your question and try to shorten it down from...
No, long story, just get to the point. So if I had troubles using these drugs and I'm trying to get back on my feet, utilizing all these great programs, if we can pass, just opening up this fund, this is just something a little bit that could help start me up. And the council would determine how much, maybe $100, maybe $200, just as a start while I go through these programs, because I'm at the bottom.
All right. Senator Nelson, did you...
Yes.
...yield to the question?
That's correct. So, yes, initially, right, so opioid leads to, opioid use leads to an addiction, right? And that's why we call it substance abuse, substance use disorder, because it creates an addiction where there is no choice. But there are people that recover from this type of addiction. And even though they are recovered from it, this struggle does not leave them, because it becomes a disease where their mind triggers their body to think that they need... where their mind triggers their body to think that they need constant use of this type of drug. And so, this gives the recovering addicts an opportunity, if, only if, the Council should discuss it, to come up with a program that would compensate the victims, just like we would compensate victims of sexual violence in, as an example.
Not a good choice, but we're running out of colleagues to speak, so why don't we just take a one-minute, one-minute recess so everybody can regroup for the meeting? Committee of House called back to order. There's only a few colleagues that haven't spoken yet. So, I'm just looking at them specifically, and I see Senator Clint Rizal, one of the few that haven't spoken. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for the proffer of the amendment. When it talks about compensation for victims of substance abuse, does this only include the person with a substance abuse problem, or does it include victims like family members, children, for example, of someone who's been struggling with substance abuse?
All right. Senator Nelson, do you yield to the question, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is general to provide direct compensation to victims of substance use disorders.
Thank you.
So, it can, whoever the Council would deem that if this was discussed, right, this is an option for the Council to do, it's not setting in stone for the Council that the Council must do it, and it's just an option for them to also to consider, to explore.
Thank you. Senator Rizal, did that answer your, did that suffice?
So, it could potentially be applicable to children of a parent who has a parent who is a substance abuser, if the Council decides that that's a valid victim or decides to go that route?
Senator Nelson?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There's only a few left. I'm going to look to my left. Does anyone else like to speak? There being none. Colleagues, there is an objection to this amendment. All in favor of the amendment, raise your hand. Oh, Bigburn? Oh, I apologize. Please close, Senator Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, this amendment is just to provide direct compensations to victims of substance use disorders, but if you look at the bill, Mr. Chair, it falls under the it falls under the provision where we discussed that it shall explore these types of programs. It's not saying that the Council has to do it, okay? So, it's not saying the Council must provide the compensation to the victims of substance use disorder. It's not saying that. It's saying that the Council shall explore it. So, there's nothing definitive here that says that the victims of substance use disorder will receive any type of compensation. It's just an extra discussion topic. And when you are an addict, there, it is a disease that you struggle with every day, so it's very difficult to make a choice. It's not as simple as, oh, I'm gonna, I'm thirsty, so I'm gonna, I choose to drink water instead of Coke. It's not that way. If you have a disease, your body is telling you, I crave this type of substance, and it's a specific drug, and it's very difficult to overcome. It's very difficult to recover from, and when you recover from it, it's not, your life changes. It doesn't, once you recover from it, it's not one and done, okay, I'm good. This is a journey for the rest of your life. That's why we see in Alcoholics Anonymous or Narcotics Anonymous, it's my 30 days, it's been a year, it's been five years, it's been 18 years. It's a lifelong journey. This is a cross they have to carry for the rest of their life. And so, I don't get the objection of having this as an extra discussion for the families that have to, for the children of the, of the, those that are recovering, or from the children that are suffering with addict parents. I don't, I don't understand what is the reason for the objection to that. It's not definitive. It is an option to discuss. There's nothing written in stone that it will happen. So, colleagues, I hope you, I humbly ask for your support. It's up to you if you think this is important or not.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. There is an objection, my colleagues. All in favor of the amendment proffered by Senator Nelson, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion fails. We are now proceeding on to the next amendment. Colleagues, next amendment is, Madam Speaker, submission, line 24, page 9.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to add a new section with two subsections. So, the first subsection is to require this Council to submit a general spending plan for the settlement proceeds. As we've seen, there are options that are available to them as to how to spend the money, and the settlement will also provide further guidance as to what categories they can spend the money on, and I would like them to make a determination as to what categories they have decided to prioritize for expenditure of these settlement proceeds. So, subsection A is a general spending plan categorized by eligible expenditures as defined by the opioid settlement agreement, and submitted to us, and determined pursuant to the AAA. In other words, the public will have input as to the general categories for Guam that we are going to direct this money. As I've pointed out earlier in our discussion, in other states, the legislature is continuing to appropriate that money. The legislature in other states has detailed exactly where this money will go, you know, right now, in advance of the proceeds even being delivered, but we're not doing that. So, I would like, at the very minimum, that this Council is going to tell us after it has deliberated what the priorities for Guam are going to be based on, you know, discussions with the professionals on this Council. Subsection B, so that's a general plan pursuant to AAA, so they will have public input as well, subject to public scrutiny. Subsection B is, this is an annual task that we are asking them to submit a detailed spending plan for the fiscal year. And I put no later than August 1, in a hopes that that would help, you know, us to ensure that those things are covered, to see their plan prior to adoption of the rest of the budget plan for the government of Guam. That's why I picked August 1. That's when we normally begin our budget deliberations, and just to ensure that those things are in line, they're set, and we proceed accordingly. So, this is, again, just to give the public every year notice of what this Council is going to prioritize, and it allows for public input as well, Mr. Chair. So, that would be my amendment, to add this new section to the bill.
All right, thank you, Madam Speaker. Anyone who would like to speak to that amendment? I'm looking for hands. Senator Torres, ma'am?
If the proffer of this amendment will so yield, it is true that the advisory council already consists of two members from the legislature, including one appointee or designee from the Speaker's office and one from the minority. So, it is, it is not, it's indisputable that the legislature's interest in the advisory council is well represented by having two members there. Given that these are not general fund monies, that we now have subjected all meetings and discussions to the open government law, does the author feel that it is necessary to have another layer of scrutiny by the legislature at this point, given that we're already involved in the process with the advisory council, the Speaker's office specifically, and the minority leadership, and it is open to the government, open government law, it is not general funds? You know, does the author believe that this, it's necessary to have this other layer of scrutiny that could potentially negate or send back the works of the Council? I just believe that the Council members, if you're going to entrust people with the authority to deliberate and make a conscious plan for the good of, the good use of these funds, that, that level of, of respect for that discretion ought to be, I would think, ought to be respected, and does the author feel that it's compromising the authority of the advisory council and what we're asking them to do?
I'll yield to that, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Absolutely not, of course. I think, if you look at the amendment, the subsection B says annually, they tell us their detailed spending plan for the year. It has nothing in here about legislative approval, they're just telling us what they have decided for that year to spend this money on in detail. And this is for public transparency, accountability, and so that the legislature, who appropriates all the rest of the funds of the government, knows where the gaps continue to exist. Subsection A, which is going to be pursuant to the AAA, I don't see the AAA as an impediment to anybody's process. I see it as a benefit, because they are going to get public input that way, according to a very clear path. And this is a general plan of the categories that they're going to prioritize. And in other words, like a one-time plan until they decide to change it again pursuant to the AAA, where they tell us, after we've given them all the options and the settlement has given them all the options as to how they can spend the money, they're going to prioritize for Guam certain categories that they see to be the need to supplant the existing services on Guam. So, I think submitting this plan one time, or, you know, after several years, again, updating it, it's like making a state plan. And I think submitting it pursuant to the AAA is a good process. It's the proven process for transparency and public input, very clear. And so, no, I don't see any impediment to the Council doing its job and creating its priorities pursuant to subsection A, or making its annual, you know, detailed spending plan for a fiscal year pursuant to subsection B. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Torres, does that suffice for-
Yeah, it does suffice, and I actually should have probably put on my glasses, because I was, I was thinking ahead that there was an approval process by the legislature, which this doesn't say. So, thank you for that answer, that satisfies my concerns.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak to that amendment? I see no hand. Are there any objections to this amendment? I see none. You object? We have one objection. All in favor, do you object? We're on the objection process.
Um, I didn't know, is there an objection?
There is an objection. We're ready to vote now, okay? No further comments on the amendment. Senator, Speaker, I think you need to close, right? There's an objection, but you, before, before I move the vote, would you like to close, please?
I'll close, sure.
Sure.
Yes. The legislature, again, is delegating its authority to a Council. It's, it's one of its, they always, in campaign times, tell us, you've got one job, legislature, and that is to appropriate the funds, including settlement funds that come into the government of Guam. That's normally the legislature's job. This is a very unusual bill in that we are delegating that responsibility to a Council. And I think, you know, this Council is not elected, they don't get to be replaced every two years like we do, if they don't like how we're spending the money, their money, the taxpayers' money, or even settlement proceeds. This Council is very protected. They serve for three years, beyond our terms. And they're going to dictate the use of $10 million. I think, at the very least, they should be accountable for that, and I see in every, in other states that I have reviewed, and of course, I haven't reviewed all of them, but in all of the ones that I have, one of their goals, and one of the goals in the, in the general discussion on it by one of those educational institutions, is make sure that there is a way for public input, that the Council doesn't operate just by itself, and that it, it's very transparent to the community what their goals are, what they're trying to spend money on every year, and how they're going to achieve, you know, the results, the treatment, or the rehabilitation, or the prevention that they claim they are going for. So, this is just to facilitate that in advance of them spending the money, not after the fact, after we get audits years later, or, you know, after the end of the spending. This is a proactive measure to ensure that we can hear in advance what their plans are. It's a very pro transparency. I see no, no impediment that this gives the Council. In fact, if I'm on the Council, I would like this, because it protects me after I've given the public notice of how I intend to spend the money, showing them exactly what treatment plans were available and how we chose one, that type of thing, Mr. Chair. So, I'd ask my colleagues, do we consider and to support this unanimously? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All, there is, my colleagues, there is an objection to this amendment. All in favor of this amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Six, motion fails. Let's move to the next amendment. Next amendment is also for you, Madam Speaker, L. 23, page 4.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this bill is intended to do very good things. It's intended to be, in advance, ensure that we know where the money's going to go and who's going to be in charge of it, and I was trying to ensure by the last amendment that everyone's going to know in advance of it being spent, how it will be spent, and that, so we can all agree that that are, those are the priorities. This amendment is an administrative one to change who-
This amendment is an administrative one to change who administers the fund, the actual fund, the, the bank account. And I have changed the current language of the bill, I'm proposing to change it from the Office of the Attorney General to the Department of Administration, who was designated under the tobacco settlement to manage the accounts, who manages all the other accounts of the government of Guam with very few exceptions, and who has staff on board full-time to do exactly this, manage the accounts and the funds of the government of Guam. And I think this amendment does not affect the Attorney General's role in the process and the litigation. They are the ones who are making all the decisions for Guam in this litigation currently, and this does not change that at all. It only change, changes who handles the bank accounts, who handles the accounting, and who reports on that accounting. So, and of course, this subsection F says establishing, establishing internal accounts to segregate funds. I mean, those are all functions of the Department of Administration. So, and because I can't see any, I haven't seen any issues with the Department of Administration and their administering of the funds for the tobacco settlements or any other funds, I would just say that we continue to do this. We not incur any additional costs in providing this kind of service from the Attorney General's office and, and let it be done at, in, for the, for the, for the government of Guam, at the treasurer of Guam, the Department of Administration. In other states, again, I've seen this, it's all controlled by the state treasurer or the state, whatever their different names of this agency are, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any of my colleague like to speak to this amendment? I'm looking for hands. I see no hands. Senator Shelton?
Soodhush, Masi, Mr. Chair. I stand in objection to the amendment. I think this is a major change to the bill that was not discussed in the public hearing process. And this is, this is removing the Attorney General as the administering authority and switching it to the Department of Administration. Traditionally, we have the Department of Administration to administer our funds, and we've heard, we've heard from them before that there are many, many funds for them to manage, and sometimes too many, though they, they do the best that they can. This is adding an additional fund to them. This is something that the Attorney General has shown us most recently with the McKenzie settlement, before there was legislation needed for new settlement terms in these other cases, that they've received the money, that they've been able to act with this money with their partners and other agencies and nonprofit groups. They've been able to act expeditiously. And I think that, that has shown us a good example of how they will administer these funds going forward. They're also a nonpartisan office, and they will be guided by the actions of this council. And so I object to, to removing this authority from the Attorney General's office and putting it with the Department of Administration. I think this is a, a major change to the bill that, that was not discussed previously, and it should remain with the Attorney General's office.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this amendment? Madam Speaker, can you close?
Sure, Mr. Chair, and I'm happy to. Yes, this is a change to the bill because the bill obviously is lacking some transparency. Even our own council, you know, did a memo questioning whether this is going to be subject to open government and all of those other transparent. This is a check and balance. It's a fund. The Department of Administration by this amendment will not be responsible for spending this money. The council remains responsible for spending the money, which is why I was trying to make the council's actions transparent as well, but that amendment failed. This gives us an additional check and balance as to just the actual bank accounts, Mr. Chair. I haven't seen any of the bank accounts from the other settlements. When we go through our budget process, we see all the funds that are managed by DOA. This should be one of them. It's just eyes on it, the more eyes on it, the less eyes on it is how we end up with the problems that we have in the government where, you know, we, we were not aware of what was going on on some other side. And this just does that. It's simple. Checks and balances. It's consistent with what the legislature has done all these years, and that is allow the Department of Administration to manage the funds of the government of Guam. It facilitates audit of the funds of the government of Guam because we've got the OPA and the DOA working together on those things, always, every year. I can't see any harm in this amendment. In fact, I'm questioning why did we have to change it in the first place under this bill or try to change it from the current process of how we handle tobacco settlement So I would ask that we, we include this as a provision for additional checks and balances, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleagues, there is an objection, all in favor of the amendment proffered by the speaker. Please raise your right hand or left, either one. One, two, five. Motion fails. My colleagues, let's move to the next one. The next amendment is Senator Perez. You've got line 3, page 4.
Okay, so this amendment actually is together with the other two amendments. I don't know, maybe it was, is it possible if I could do the next amendment because that really sets up the other?
No, we'll proceed in, in the order as it was received. I wish everybody would just, we'll just work it, let's just work this one, and then we'll see as we go along. Thank you.
So this amendment really is tied to, so my concern with, with this fund is that it's not really clear as how, as to how the 30% is going to be used. So the breakdown was 15, 15, 70. So 70% is going to abatement, 15 to the state and 15 to its subdivision. So during the committee on the whole, it wasn't, there wasn't any definitive answer as to how that 15% to the subdivision was going to be used. And so, you know, there's a lot of things in play here as far as, you know, you know, how to best utilize these funds. You know, we, we want to be able to direct the funds to where it's most needed. So is it purchasing, mass purchasing of naproxen? Is it, you know, education? You know, we, we should be able to balance these needs and also look into the, the supplant versus, what's the term? Yeah, so there's a, there is a term where we cannot supplant whatever government is doing. So again, there's a lot of considerations at stake. And it's always, I think, when we're talking about a long-term fund, there's, there's going to be changes over the, the term of the, when the money's available.
Excuse me, Senator Perez. I think we need to take a quick recess because we're trying to follow you along, and the clerks have signal me. So let's take a quick recess, and then we regroup, and then you start again. Thank you. Commander Olus, call back to order. Colleagues, as you're looking at the amendment, I'm going to explain a little bit first before I ask you, Senator Perez, you'll find that, if you look at the amendment where she double line, that's what she's injecting, and then what strikes out is what she's removing. Okay? So you actually got to look and see the double line to be able to follow along, because that's where I kind of like, got lost a little bit, but I recovered. Senator Perez, let's start again, one more time, from the very beginning, and please explain your amendment first, and then you can talk about it, everything in general, but just so that they all understand specifically what's being added and what's being removed. And then you can talk about the rest of the other part you were discussing. Thank you, Senator Perez.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the amendment is on line 3, page 4. And the part that's changed is the fund shall be, what, sorry, the fund shall be a continuing fund and shall be expended pursuant to section 221603B, which is the section on eligible expenditures. And then it crosses off the next part, and then continues on with monies remaining in the fund at the end of the fiscal year should not be transferred to the general fund. The fund should not be subject to any transfer authority by E. Maga Hagan Guam. So the idea is that keep it in a lockbox, right? As tight of a lockbox, but there should be the opportunity of the legislature to appropriate this money, to get the fullest transparency and accountability, and to make sure all these considerations that I was speaking to earlier, making sure that it's not, it's not supplanting, it's supplementing the budgets of these agencies that would utilize the funds. It would also ensure that the terms and conditions of the settlement agreement is being followed. So we're, we want to make the highest and best use of these funds for our community and getting the full transparency as well. So that is the intent of this, of this amendment and to allow legal counsel to make technical corrections.
All right, thank you, Senator Perez. Does anyone like to speak to this amendment? I'm looking for hands. Senator Tello, please, on this amendment.
Soodhush, Masi, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I thank you for the opportunity to speak on the, and be a co-sponsor of this amendment. As, the good senator, the author of this amendment was trying to allude to the next amendment that's coming up, you know, going hand in hand with this. Because if you're looking at what was included in this amendment where it says, and shall be expended pursuant to 221603, which is on page, on the other page, this allows the, the council, the Advisory Council, to actually provide this information to the legislature and any kind of plan that they have in place be given approval by the legislature by resolution. So by, I mean, we said earlier about the importance of transparency and the abilities to spend this money, you know, so that all the people of Guam are, are well-informed or have the ability to review moving forward on how, how this council is moving forward on their advice on spending this funding. When it goes to the legislature for resolution approval, this again opens up for transparency again, to allow the people of Guam to see how this money is being spent, and the legislature as well, to scrutinize whatever plans that they have in place. I think that's the most important part of this legislation, and this amendment will hold true to what everybody talks about, transparency. I mean, even the administration boasts about transparency, but do they really practice it? This body here has on many occasions, occasions talked about transparency and the importance of it and accountability. And then when it comes time to really vote on certain measures that do that, some, some of the body turns a blind eye to it, thinking that nobody's watching, that the media is not taking up on this and reminding about any kind of comments they made in the past or on radio or letters that are written regarding transparency. Again, this will tie into the next amendment. And it's important, Mr. Chair, especially since the other amendments didn't pass, where we would give us the opportunity, not only the legislature to scrutinize the plans that this, this council has put together, but the people of Guam as well. Just remember about that, that word, transparency. Everybody, so easy for people to say it real quick, they don't practice it. So, Mr. Chair, I stand in full support of this and ask my colleagues to please consider it, you know, put that check and balances, that, that's not in this bill right now. It's been tried several times before this amendment on other amendments to put that check and balance. And this is an opportunity to do so, this amendment and the next one coming up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this amendment? Senator Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just looking at the amendment here, what is being added is and shall be pursuant to subsection 221603. Is that what's being added, the double underline?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the cross-out is amounts credited to the funds shall not be subject to further appropriation and monies?
That's correct. Striked out.
Okay, so just a question for the sponsor of the amendment. What is the purpose of striking out that area?
Senator Perez, do you yield to the question?
Yes, I do. Yeah, so again, this was supposed to be a series of amendments, and it, it really stems upon the legislature being able to appropriate these funds. That's why that is struck out, again, for, you know, greater transparency and, you know, tailoring the use of these funds over the long term. So the answer is to, for, yeah, the intent was to, in my next amendment, is to, to allow for legislative appropriation.
On the next amendment, but on this one is just to strike it out?
Yes, yeah, that's the reason, yeah.
Senator Nelson, did that suffice?
Not exactly, Mr. Chair, because it says that amounts credited to the, to the fund shall not be subject to further appropriation and monies, and that's what is being removed here.
That's correct.
So I think that's ensuring that it's not appropriated elsewhere and that it's appropriated for the purpose of what is listed in the bill. And then if we talk about transparency, the bill has reporting requirements, which is in subsection 221605 where it states, actually, no later than October 31st, annually, no later than October 31st, the Office of Attorney General shall submit a report on the activity, revenue, and expenditures to and from the revenue, and expenditures to and from the fund to E. Magahag in Guam and the Speaker of Ilisator in Guam. The report shall also be posted on the OEG website. The reports shall include, but not limited to, the revenue credited to the fund, the amount of expenditures attributable to the administrative costs of administering the fund, including administrative support to the Office of Attorney General and the council, an itemized list of expenditures and data and an assessment of the effectiveness of activities funded. So they have to prove that what they decided on is helping the people of Guam. And then it goes on to state that in 221607, there's an annual audit, and the Office of Public Accountability shall perform an annual audit of the opioid recovery trust fund and the compliance of the opioid recovery advisory council with the expenditure of such funds within the fund in accordance with the administration and exclusive purposes of this article. Said audit shall include, but is not limited to, the revenues to the fund and the expenditures from the fund. The OPA shall prepare and provide a written report of compliance no later than 75 days after the end of the fiscal year to E. Magahag in Guam and the Speaker of Ilisator in Guam. And so in any instance, the legislature can act on this, and they're given requirements to do an annual audit. And in the reporting requirements, I've never seen, not that I've never seen this before, but it's unusual, because it says, "you need to give me a data and an assessment of the effectiveness of the activities that you funded. You need to prove to me that what the council decided worked for them, worked for the people, worked for the victims." We want to see tangible results, not just, "oh, provide me what was given. Show me what you, what program you did." No, prove to me that your program worked. And so, and then I don't understand the reasoning with the amounts credited to the fund shall not be subject to further appropriation and monies, and so we don't want to appropriate it anywhere else, but we're removing, in this amendment, this amendment is completely removing that line in the bill. So once you remove the line where you, where the line says that the fund shall not be subject to further appropriation monies, you're basically saying the money can be used elsewhere. And we all know that once you put money into the general fund, whether you put a lockbox in it or not, I see many times that the revenue sources that come in are not efficient enough, so we have to spread it out through different agencies that perform similar missions and visions to help the people. So I don't know, Mr. Chair, I'm just trying to understand the rhetoric behind it, when there's provisions in the bill that says that you must be transparent, that you have to prove to me that you're working on it, there's communications in the bill where at any time the legislature can act.
Anyone else like to speak to, Senator Moynihan, to the amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The amendment doesn't really follow, or it's trying to change what the advisory council in this bill is set up to do. And the advisory council is the one in the bill that takes care or determines the allocation and expenditures of these funds. And as I read through again, who consists of the advisory council, I'm kind of, I'm really agreeing with the bill. One member is coming from the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, who really has a great impact on helping the treatment for these folks. The next member, voting member, is from the Department of Public Health and Social Services, again, a big, they really help these folks who were trying to assist with this bill. The administrative courts has a great interest in this as well. Guam Memorial Hospital Authority has a member there, too. The governor even appoints a family member of an individual with opiate use disorders to this committee. The governor can also appoint nonprofit organizations that provide direct services for this purpose, which, this is all pretty good. The speaker of the legislature can also appoint a member as well, so there's some scrutiny there. And also, my minority leader here can appoint, will appoint a member as well, too. So the minority views could be heard and fought for and scrutinized there for the checks and balances. The mayor's council even has a member, because they're all affected in their villages and want to see the best on how we can utilize this money, to include the public defender service that is probably really busy because of all these problems due to the opioids. So really, like what the bill says, we have a diverse representation on this council. I like to stick with the council appropriating these funds. I'm pretty confident of all these different members that have all their expertise, experience, and that have been dealing with these situations much longer than I've been a senator. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. Anyone else would like to speak to this amendment? Otherwise, I'm going to ask Senator Perez to close. Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's true, this council is going to be delegated the authority to appropriate the funds, to expend the funds, and obviously now, without any necessity for public input, any necessity for a look at their proposed expenditures prior to their approval, only afterward. This is so common in the government. Of course, we can require audits, and we are receiving audits, even years, from activities for years, that have been going on for years. And it's very difficult for the legislature to really correct those things years later, to seek the money back. It's almost impossible. To, of course, allocate the money better is what we try to do, close the loopholes, but why not get all the information necessary in advance? Why not? Why are we making this huge departure from the entity in the government of Guam, who manages all the funds of the government of Guam, to another entity, who is already currently empowered, super-empowered, to handle all litigation for every agency of the government, and by this bill to waive any other legislation for every agency or for the government of Guam in general? That's a huge power. And to agree to the terms of the settlement, including what purposes in general will the settlement funds be used for, lots of power, lots of influence, lots of, hopefully, good work, so that the money is going to get towards the services that we greatly need in this community. And if anybody thinks that it doesn't, we spent, I think, we put $1 million extra to behavioral health in one of our budgets, that was like a drop in the bucket for behavioral health compared to the services that we need in Guam. One of my colleagues calculated that this program might, or these settlement funds might bring us in a $500,000 a year. That's not even an amount to a new in-treatment service program. It doesn't cover the cost. But we have money to give away in cash to people? I can't see why we're going to do that, when we have an entire community waiting for services, waiting for years, and we finally have an opportunity to give it to them. I say, let's do our best as a legislature. If we are going to allocate or direct this authority of ours, we're so fast to do that. Other states, they fought over this. They wanted to dictate exactly where this money is going to go. And I say, if we're going to delegate this authority to a council, why can't we require that this council is going to be upfront with it? And if we're not going to require that the council has to answer to the people of Guam, not going to require that the council has to show the legislature its plan, or tell us in advance for our fiscal year how they're going to spend the money, so that we and all the agencies can plan accordingly? If that's not going to be a requirement, then why delegate it to a council? I say, take it back to the legislature, which is what this particular amendment is trying to do. If the legislature can't do, at least put some protections in this bill, some checks and balances, allowing Department of Administration to oversee the funds, no harm in that. But if we can't do these simple protections, then I think we have no business delegating that authority, and at least let the people vote us out, criticize us, come in here in public hearings, and tell us their input on the crisis that we are facing today. And I really, you know, I just think we need to focus on that. We have a crisis, and we're trying to expedite it by allowing this council to put its, you know, best foot forward, but I don't think they need to do that in, behind curtains. I think they need to do that in very open sunshine. And so if we're not going to pass any of those amendments to require that of this council, then I support this amendment. That would, that would keep this authority in its original place, and that is in the legislature. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Speaker. Does anyone else like to speak? If not, I'm going to ask Senator Perez to close. Oh, Senator Shelton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I rise in opposition to this amendment. I think some points have been made about the composition of this council and who these folks are, who are going to be helping to guide us in using these settlement funds. These are members of the community. It has been stated previously in this discussion, members of this community who have experience in this field, members of this community who are experts, and who share the same mission as we do, for caring for the people of Guam, preventing any further drug abuse, substance abuse, and harm to families on our island. And so the setup of this opioid fund and advisory council is allowing us to place our trust in our government agencies, who are providing these direct services, in experts in our community, who know the struggles, the causes, the effects of drug use, of substance abuse disorder, put our trust in community partners, nonprofit organizations, put our trust in families who have gone through this experience, and folks who we will appoint from this legislature, folks who are elected mayors will also appoint from their village We're not giving away the power of the legislature to appropriate this money. We're putting our trust in the experts, in people with firsthand experience, in our constituents, in the people who elected us, to help guide the decisions of how this money will be used. And I like to remind all of our colleagues that there are very specific settlement terms of how these funds are allowed to be used, and we have further laid that out in the language of this bill. For treatment, for recovery, for education. This is not money that will be spent irresponsibly. There are specific guidelines that will be followed, and we have the opportunity here to use the resources that we already have in our community, the human resources of people that we trust, and people who we know will guide us to make the right decisions for the use of these settlement funds. And so I stand in objection to this amendment, Mr. Chair. Sujus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Does anyone else like to speak, there being none? Oh, others have spoken. Senator Perez, you can please close on your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what's so important is to know that trust is not given, it's earned, and the best way to do that is to ensure that there are proper checks and balances. And so what this amendment does, I just want to be very clear that, and, you know, it's, there was some misinformation given previously, and I just want to be very clear that this amendment ensures that the money will not be transferred to the general fund, and it's going to be used for eligible expenses as pursuant to section 221603. And what that section says is that any funds appropriated, expended, or distributed from the opioid recovery trust fund shall be spent in accordance with the terms of any verdict, judgment, compromise, or settlement in or out of court of any case or controversy brought pursuant to the Consumer Protection Act. So it's very clear, and that's the reason behind that amendment, that we wanted, I wanted to be very clear that the money is to, that's going to be spent, will abide by the settlement, and it's not to go to the general fund, it's to go towards those who have been victims of this opioid addiction through the actions of various entities and corporations. So that, I want to be very clear. It just behooves me to, I mean, I'm just, I'm sort of questioning, what is the resistance to checks and balances? It makes me wonder, you know, what is, what is at stake here? You know, we're dealing with money, of course, you know, we want to make sure, again, we are trying to gain the public trust, and the best way to do that is through transparency and the checks and balances, and this amendment does that. It's upstream, so a lot of what was spoken earlier is that there's going to be reporting, there's going to be audits, but that's downstream, and that's potentially after an infraction may occur. You know, with the budget process, we see, you know, there's, the senators are there to question, the public's there to view and question how money is being spent, and that's probably the most effective time to catch any sort of, or address any concerns and questions. And so really, if we want to gain the public trust, it's really about putting in these checks and balances. And again, you know, how would, I mean, yes, we know these people personally, but it's not the people, again, it's the system. It's a system that we are trying to address. And if we have a good, good checks and balances, it would assure that, you know, we are using these, or expending these funds according to the settlement. Yeah, so I just don't understand all the resistance to the checks and balances, really. Thank you.
Thank you. My colleagues, there is an amendment, proffered by Senator Perez and Senator Tello, tied away. There is an objection. All in favor, please raise right or left hand, either one. One, two, three, four. Motion fails. My colleagues, we're going to take a five-minute recess. All right? All right? Committee of the House called back to order. Senator Perez, you made your closing. There is an objection to this amendment. All in favor of this amendment, please raise your hand, whichever hand you choose. One, two, three, four. Amendment fails. My colleagues, we will go now to the next amendment. The next amendment is... Senator Perez, again. Line 14, page 5.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this amendment basically adds on a statement to Section 221603 about eligible expenditures, subsection B. It adds a sentence, "Any fund shall be subject to legislative appropriation." So, sorry, I need to amend my amendment to, instead of legislative approval by resolution, it should be legislative appropriation.
Just legislative approval? You're striking out of resolution?
So, yeah, so I would strike out approval by resolution and substitute it with appropriation.
So, subject to legislative appropriation?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. I don't see any issue on that one. Would anyone like to speak? Or would you like to go ahead and give your opening about?
It's the same, same reasons, yeah.
Same thing. All right, anyone who would like to speak to this amendment?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do we need to adopt the amendment?
Oh, I apologize.
Or the change, or not adopt it, but just make sure everybody's clear. That's what, that's what we're amending.
Are there any objections to this amendment? Do you have an objection to the amendment?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
To the amendment, to the amendment? Or they're, we're at the amendment process now, of the amendment. So no problem with you? No objection to the amendment, to the amendment? Okay? There being no objection, motion passes. Now, your amendment as amended, would anyone would like to speak to this amendment as amended? Looking for hands, anybody? Senator Telo, please.
Situs Massey, Mr. Chair. As a co-sponsor to this amendment, I stand in full support of this amendment. It was discussed a little bit on how this is going to play out with the first amendment that didn't pass. But still, we can incorporate this amendment moving forward. But you know, Mr. Chair, the plan, the accountability, the transparency, and most especially, the checks and balances are very important for the people of Guam. So it's our job, our duty, our responsibility to put those into play with every bill that we pass, with every amendment that we make. Mr. Chair, I just don't understand why this body, who not too long ago pleaded and provided a resolution on a plan on using ARP funding before the money was spent, how many of us in this body asked for that plan ahead of time before the governor started spending ARP funding? We even put a resolution together to provide, to give a plan ahead of time. Nobody is questioning the council, the advisory councils' makeup, who sits on there, the institutional knowledge that is put into that. Nobody's questioning the makeup of this body, trying to touch on every aspect of our community, where it touches individuals who deal with this crisis. We're not talking about them. We're talking about the checks and balances for what they're doing as a body. Who's watching over them, Mr. Chair? It's our responsibility to do that. It's our responsibility to look at their plan ahead of time. Mr. Chair, how many of us requested that plan from the governor ahead of time? And if anybody, you know, is against this amendment on providing information to the legislature before it's implemented, then it's hypocritical. Because if I'm not mistaken, everybody wrote on that resolution for a plan, to put a plan ahead of time. What's stopping us now for this? It's an award that's been given to the people of Guam to address this crisis. Let's not wait until after the fact. Because it's a lot harder to remedy, and it's a lot harder to get the money back if it wasn't spent in the correct way or manner. We need to act on this before it's too late. And again, we are not questioning the body, the council, or the makeup of this council. I think it's a great council that's been put together. In fact, I wish there were more people on this council to provide their input, their expertise. But it all boils down to one thing, this body's responsibility, our responsibility for checks and balance, for transparency, for accountability, and know beforehand where the money is going to be spent. Just like we did with that resolution, just like we did when we called out the administration. That's all we're doing here. Let's not be hypocrites. Let's maintain that same request. Let's maintain that same practice. Let's scrutinize whatever plan that's coming in front of us. Let's make it transparent so the people of Guam can see. And if there's any questionable or will intentions, that we correct that before it's too late. And that's 101 responsibility and accountability. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senators Dadey. Does anyone else would like to speak to this amendment? There being none, Senator Shelton. You have an objection, Senator, 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 Madam Speaker?
Yes, on the amendment. The amendment again is, after the failure of previous amendments to add in some checks and balances or transparency into the actions of this council prior to their expenditure of funds, none of this council, well, with very few exceptions, is approved, you know, or even, yeah, subject to consent of the legislature. Many of them serve in offices that will exceed our two-year terms. In other words, I guess their protection is greater than ours, right? In our jobs, we get subject to scrutiny every two years at the very minimum, if not, you know, during every public hearing, in particular, when we're trying to make expenditures of government money. And it's a very important thing, you know. The bill has a very good intention, that is to create a fund, make sure these funds are dedicated, not able to be used for any other purpose, and that, and that they are directed to where we are in greatest need in our community during this crisis that we are facing in regards to substance abuse, addiction, and in particular opioids. We are not just delegating the legislative authority here, we are also delegating the governor's authority. And we're delegating it to a council, who, all I ask is that they be forced to be transparent. And we can trust them individually. If you want to do that, fine. But trust is not a, it's not our job. Our job is to write the laws to ensure the greatest amount of transparency that we can afford, to ensure the public has an opportunity for input. This is the most important part for me. Because there are different treatment programs available. We can spend the money educating, or we can spend the money in inpatient drug, you know, treatment. These are, these are very important choices, and I don't think they're going to be easy at all. And there's going to be a great demand on where this money is going to go. We have very limited funds. And we have limited funds today. Even with these settlement, we continue to have limited funds. And so I think it's very, the community as a whole is going to want to know how we're going to prioritize the use of those funds. We have, you know, lawyers handling the litigation very well so far. I'm glad we're part of this settlement. I'm glad we're being proactive in passing a bill, creating a special fund, and that we're being proactive in, you know, outlining the purposes of the fund. I think that we should, you know, at every point possible, allow for some greater input by the public and creator, I mean, greater checks and balances, greater transparency. And it really, you know, if, we were willing to give this to a council, if they could put some transparency into their process, and if they're not, then I say we go with the default transparency process that we have in place. And that is, any appropriation of funds is going to have to be subject to public hearing. If it's through the legislature, it's subject to public hearing. It's subject to committee of the whole, subject to five days' notice, subject to all of those things, all of those protections for the public, all of those opportunities for the public. And if there's any senator who's not up to this task of, you know, delving into the details, prioritizing, hearing, listening to the experts as we would listen to the council, who would be making recommendations, then I don't, I don't think they're up to their job. We have to be up to that, up to listening, and up, and up to making those hard, hard decisions. And I think, you know, in the face of no other means for transparency or openness, that, that this is, that this amendment proposes that. So I support this amendment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Perez, will you close?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so what this amendment does, it requires legislative appropriation, that this fund go through legislative appropriation in addition to the requirement that the funds be expended according to the settlement. be expended according to the settlement. So what this does, it ensures a rigorous process so that protections are in place in how these funds are spent. And I think, I truly believe that we need to be better stewards of our finances in government. And this just only allows for greater protections and increasing the public confidence and trust in us as we expend much-needed funds. I believe in the use of these funds going towards those that have suffered from opioid addiction, but it's really, it's really about them. It's really about protecting these funds so that they get the most out of these funds. And that's really what this amendment is about, Ms. Mosse.
Thank you, Senator Perez. My colleagues, there's an amendment as amended by Senator Perez, and there's been an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand, left or right. One, two, three, four, five. Motion fails. Senator Perez, oh, stand by. You have one for line 17, page 5.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this amendment is, what it does, it, it amends the role of the advisory council to be just that, to advise and provide, to provide recommendations, and according to this act, to the legislature for the allocation or expenditure of the fund. So it provides checks and balance again, because what I see currently in this bill, as it is unamended, or as it is right now, is that there are conflicts of interest that exist in this bill. And again, this is, I think, you know, as an advisory council, yeah, creating this as a true advisory council, because what it, what it exists in the bill right now is that this advisory council also can benefit from the fund. So I think it's important to have this checks and balance included. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Anyone would like, any of my colleagues would like to speak to this? Senator Dadey, co-sponsor for the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak, and I stand in full support of this amendment. You know, whenever reading this legislation, and, and everyone keeps saying counsel, counsel, but the true wording is advisory council. It's advisory, you know, and that just, in my mind, that means they're giving us suggestions, they're advising us on how to spend this money, but that's it. I mean, there's nothing in here that, in the title, advisory council, meaning advisory council appropriations, advisory, you know, we all know that that's what they're going to be able to do in this, but why call it advisory council? Why not just be a council? Because, you know, they're the ones that's going to be expending this funding. But I think it's, it's appropriate when you have a council providing you suggestions, advice, to call it advisory council. It just, it just, you know, blows my mind to think that this is more than just an advisory It's more than that. It's dictating and appropriating and spending funding. And again, Mr. Chair, the checks and balances, bringing it to the legislature so they can scrutinize this, is, that's what it should be doing, that's the responsibility of this Again, somebody brought up trust, yeah, it's one thing to trust, right? We can do that, but that has nothing to do with checks and balances and ensuring that we do our due diligence and cross our Ts and dot our Is. Advisory council, that just tells me it advises us, nothing more. But let's keep to what it says, the title says, advisory only. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Dadey. Anyone else would like to speak to this amendment? I see no other hand. Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to rise in support of this amendment. The amendment is to provide, is to change the advisory council from determining the expenditures of the fund to an advisory council that provides recommendations to the legislature for the allocation or expenditures of the fund. Again, all previous amendments to require this advisory council to act, you know, to submit its plans in advance, to show how it's going to be expending the funds for a fiscal year, those amendments failed. So I would recommend this amendment pass so that the legislature can ensure that public has input in the process of allocating the funds, and that the public is heard, and that the very hard decisions about which treatment programs we are going to adopt as a government or bypass, or whether we're going to do education only and no treatment programs, or we're going to give out cash instead, all of those, all of that be determined by somebody in the open, and that public input be solicited. I also want to point out that this is, this is how it's done in New York, according to the New York law that passed in regards to this opioid settlement. They said, "Settlement fund shall be available following appropriation by the legislature shall only be expended on eligible expenditures defined," you know, blah, 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 "and their eligible expenditures are the same as what we have put into this bill." In other words, even the legislature is tied to these categories of expenditure, and even the legislature will be tied to compliance with the settlement agreement. And the AG's job is to make sure that when we say we're spending it on this, that that is in compliance with the litigation and the settlement that they have entered into on our behalf. But I think, you know, in light, in light of no other provisions in the bill, protecting the public, their input, or their, you know, ability to prioritize expenditure of these funds, that we, we do that through the legislature, and we will have the same benefit that the council is going to provide, we will have that benefit for us as well. And this is the same way that tobacco settlement funds are managed, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I certainly support this amendment. I see how the discussion is going with this and the other amendments, that we continue to vie down the middle. But I don't see why the resistance exists with regards to having the public be aware and being open to this process in terms of how these funds are going to be spent, in terms of what programs are going to be prioritized, because certainly, there are many families on Guam that have been affected with regards to opioid use and other, other drug use in this community, and certainly, I'm sure our people would want to know. But I think this continued resistance to opening this up to the public, I mean, makes me uncomfortable to the point that I don't know if I'm going to vote for this bill. I don't know why our objective in wanting to make this a public process has been met with such resistance. I don't think there's a gain by that. You're going to create a council that essentially in and of itself is going to be able to make all these decisions in and of themselves, and maybe we'll hear about it. I don't think that's what we should be doing. And, you know, this is not the first settlement that the government of Guam has received. We've had other settlements in the past. I don't think it takes away from the work or the objective, it seems, it simply opens the door for public review and public involvement. If we don't agree with what the council puts forth, then, you know, maybe the public comes up and says, well, hey, this is some, an area we really feel needs to be reviewed or invested, or maybe the funds need to go here, because while $10 million sounds like a lot of money, as mentioned earlier, the stretch of time that it has to be expended, or the time it's going to take for us to receive to expend it, you know, $500,000 a year for this type of program, they're going to be challenged, because that money can be so easily absorbed. Just imagine the amount of counseling and investment and time and support that needs to be provided. I mean, $500,000 can get eaten up by a handful, a small handful of those in need. So knowing that, I think more the reason that there should be a process of public review. And right now, the current legislation without these amendments being included provides an opportunity of something I don't think our public is working towards. I think the public involvement is actually going in the opposite direction of wanting to know more so how public funds are being expended. So with that, I do rise in support of the amendment, and I do caution my colleagues to be aware, I mean, if you want to object to every turn on this, that it's going to be this way or the highway, then maybe, you know, you don't get the support you'd like on this bill, even as valuable as, as a mission is that's being, being made here. With that, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to comment on this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Do I see any more hands to speak? Running out of colleagues. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Would you like to close, please, on the amendment as amended?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I thank my, my colleagues for their support of this, this amendment. And again, it's really about to ensure that the settlement money is going to receive public input, and also to address the concern about conflict of interest. Because as is written currently in the bill, those that are determining the allocation, are they, are themselves going to receive the money? And I think it's really important to have this safeguard included in this bill to allow for public input. In fact, that's one of the recommendations by a report from Harvard University, and it states that it's important to develop a fair and transparent process for deciding where to spend the funding. It was provided to us, to all our colleagues. And so what this amendment is trying to do is to try to ensure that, ensure transparency in the use of these funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. My colleagues, there's amendment on the floor by Senator Perez. Are there any objections to this amendment? As, we have an objection. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand, whichever hand you choose. One, two, three, four, five, six. Amendment fails. Senators, my colleagues, we will now move to the next amendment, and this next amendment is proffered by the Speaker. Associated administrative costs, line seven, page five. Madam Speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My amendment to line seven, page five, is to section 221603A. And so right now, it says monies shall be expended to mitigate the impacts of the opioid epidemic, et cetera. And then it says, monies in the fund may be expended to support reasonable costs associated with the administration of the fund. I'd like to add to that the words, including, "to offset the cost of legal and administrative burdens imposed upon the Attorney General's office, which shall not exceed 10% of the total annual deposits into the fund." The main objective of this amendment is to cap the amount of reasonable costs that can be taken away from the proceeds of the settlement and used for administrative costs. I think we can cap this, and it can, without any, you know, undue burden on any agency. I think we need to cap this unless we see another government of Guam program that is primarily used for costs, as opposed to use for the actual treatment of those who are addicted. That's the goal of, of putting our money into a trust fund, is to get that treatment done, to get the prevention done, not to fund any other agency, not to grow any agency, none of that, unless we're growing behavioral health treatment centers, Mr. Chair. The, I tried to look through, again, other states and how they have handled the costs, and many of them cap it, many of them cap legal fees, because in those states, it's not just their Attorney General's office that's doing the litigation, but they also have counties also represented by attorneys, and every different entity of their government who's entitled to these proceeds has its own lawyer. Here, we have an Attorney General's office that's fully funded already by your budget, Mr. Chair, and able, obviously, to handle the litigation aspects of this and some of the administration to date. We also have a Department of Administration completely able to handle administration of a special fund of the government without really much additional costs. And so that's why I'm, I'm proposing a cap on it at 10%, and, and I'm allowing that the cost can cover both or either, and of course, this will be, at this point, subject to the determination of the council. But it allows flexibility, and it also puts a cap on administrative costs. We've seen this in some of the other trust funds, that one of the audits questioned the use of costs, and that there was great costs, I think, in the administration of the cancer trust fund, and asking us to, to revise that. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Does anyone would like to speak to this amendment proffered by the Speaker? Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just have a question, because the, in the bill, it also requires the public auditor provide audits every, I think, annually. So maybe perhaps adding administrative costs to include the public auditor, is that, maybe I can, that's a question for the proffered amendment.
You wanted to add the OPAs, what you're considering?
Yeah.
They're funded also by us, but, okay. Speaker, do you want, yield to that question?
Is that a question, Mr. Chair?
Is, is that a question you wanted, because you were questioning if, wanted to consider the OPA? Everybody's going to grab a piece of the pie, and I don't know, I'm not comfortable with that, but anyway.
Or just perhaps, maybe, it's not just the Attorney General's office that's, is going to be affected by this, but there, the public auditor too would be affected?
Well, that's the OPAs' job, to do audits, no matter whichever agency exists or funds. But if, if...
I'll yield if that's a question to me, Mr. Chair. Yes, I kind of share your sentiment. We are funding an OPA's office to do audits, we are funding an Attorney General's office to do litigation, and we are funding a Department of Administration to manage and administer the funds of the government of Guam. For me, these, these entities, I am hoping, you know, for the sake of the crisis that we are in, you know, could really settle on nominal amounts, and that we put the rest of the settlement funds directly into services. Thank you.
Senator Perez, does that suffice?
Yeah, I mean, I support the cap for administrative funds because, or fees, because, again, we don't, we want to basically use this for direct services. I think that's, that's very important, that we prioritize that, and I think it's important to cap that. So I agree with, to the capping. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else, Senator Taylor, would you like to speak to this amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just for short. You know, I stand in support of this amendment, however, you know, I mean, 10%, if 55, 555 is coming in, you know, you're looking at about $50,000. And as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, you know, every year we budget all these agencies to do the job that, you know, we pay, or the people of Guam pay them to do with their tax paying money. But, you know, I was thinking if I could just take one minute, because, you know, the limited gaming fund, Mr. Chair, that, that's on the books right now, I believe receives only 5% of administrative costs, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm wondering why, I mean, I know we have done more than even 10%, but can I have one short recess to see about?
All right, let's take a couple minutes recess. Thank you. Thank you. Give me the highest call back to order. Senator Telo, you have a...
Thank you.
Probably amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I do. I just want to strike it out from 10% to make it 5%. You know, it's the same that we're doing for the limited gaming right now on administrative costs and indirect costs, so that's my amendment to the amendment.
All right, my colleagues, does anyone would like to speak to the amendment? On the amendment? Are there any objections to the amendment of the amendment? You have an objection? Have an objection, okay, not, they're the one to five, one to 10.
Who's objecting?
Uh, Senator... There's an objection, okay. All in favor? I don't, I don't think you need to close this one, you've explained that, okay? All in favor of the amendment to the amendment? Please raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four, five. Amendment fails. Back to your... Okay, back to the Speaker, to the 10%. Okay, no, she's finished, she's done, she waved at you. She's good. Does anyone else like to speak to the amendments? If not, I'm going to have the Speaker close on the, on our amendment of the 10%.
I'll wave closing, Mr. Chair.
You wave closing. Are there any objections to this amendment? I see no hands, this amendment passes, thank you. Now we are at the last amendment for this bill. We are at, Senator Telo, tie it away. Oh, wait a minute, I think you have two, right?
Just one, Mr. Chair, on line three, page seven.
All right, okay, the 10% also, okay.
Yeah, since that amendment already passed, Mr. Chair, from the good Speaker, you know, that was the other amendment I had, just in case, but regardless. This amendment is on line three, page seven, Mr. Chair. It's a letter G, as in Gecko. Council members shall serve without compensation. And then the next line after that says, however, members shall be reimbursed for actual expenses necessarily incurred in the performance of their duties. And this is where it scratched out, Mr. Chair, from however, all the way to duties. Mr. Chair, if you read this particular line, council members shall serve without compensation, okay? But if you read the second line, the one that I'm striking out, it says, however, members shall be reimbursed for actual expenses necessarily incurred in the performance of their duty. Mr. Chair, this section, it leaves, it's a blank check. There's nothing in here requiring preapproval. Nothing stops from any of these council members, and they're talking individual council members. Nothing stops them from, a council member deciding to go to Colorado and go to a seminar over there and listening about opioids and, you know, thing. Nothing stops them from doing, and then coming back and saying, hey, reimburse me $1,500, because I went to Colorado to go to a seminar. Nothing, you know, and that, basically, this sentence by however, members shall be reimbursed, shall be reimbursed. So that individual member can go up to the council and basically say, you have to pay me, you have to reimburse me for my expenses. So this is a very, very broad, you know, sentence. And it's just simply crossing that section out. However, members shall be reimbursed for actual expenses necessarily incurred in the performance of their duties.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Telo. Does anyone would like to speak to this amendment that strikes out the however, members shall be reimbursed, and further onto the end? I see no, oh, yes. It's to the amendment, if you look at the drive, it's the last amendment, and it only refers to council members shall serve without compensation. Then whatever's followed, however, members shall be reimbursed for actual expenses necessary incurred in the performance of their duty, that's striked out. So in other words, these members, they're all appointed by our people, they don't need to be paid. Does anybody would like to speak to this? Senator Perez, would you like to speak to this, or you were just waiting to make sure?
Yeah, no, I'd like to speak. Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Please?
Yeah, no, I rise in full support, as one of the co-sponsors of this amendment. I think it's right for abuse to leave this in, saying that actual expenses can be reimbursed without any kind of protocol. And, I mean, really, the fund really should go towards, you know, those that have suffered from the harm of what these corporations have done to push opioids. And, you know, I, yeah, this really goes away against the intent of this trust fund. And when you look at the eligible expenses, it opens up a loophole where the monies can be diverted to uses that are not really, you know, that explicitly said earlier in the bill. So, yeah, I rise in full support.
All right, thank you. Madam Speaker, do you want to speak? None. Does anyone else like to speak to this amendment? If not, Senator Telo, I don't think you need a closing for this, unless you want to make a closing. Are there any objections to this amendment? There being none, all, motion passes. Thank you, my colleagues. My colleagues, we have completed the Bill 204-36.
Mr. Chair.
With amendments, yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move to reconsider one of my prior, previous amendments that failed. That is the one to correct the composition of the council, so that, first of all, so that line B will reflect the correct number of members.
Which line are you at?
This is line 26, page five.
Line 26, page five.
The title, I think, on the drive says L18, page five.
Has everybody found that, where the...
Nine.
It's the composition of the council.
Yes.
In other words, from 11, it went to 10, but it's actually nine?
Yes, and that...
I'm going to ask my colleagues, there's a motion to reconsider the action of the body of that amendment. That amendment number is, this is TNT, line 26, page five. Are there any objections to reconsider the action of the body? There being none, so it is... Madam Speaker, you wanted to reconsider that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It will, I think we need to correct the number of voting and non-voting members to create an uneven number. And so my proposal was to remove the judiciary of Guam, who is also, you know, part of the, you know, they're the sentencing arm of opioid, you know, if they're subject to courts. And so I would just propose that they be removed. They can continue to have input on this council if the council is open, if the council invites their input. But I just don't think they need to be a voting member, so it's just to make the voting members uneven, instead of even numbered. Yeah.
So you wanted, so what...
It's to, strike through subsection four. B4.
So you're going to still strike the administrative courts?
Yeah, that's correct.
So we're back to the same amendment?
Correct, we're reconsidering this, because, yes.
Okay. So we'll try this one more time. Senator Telo, yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chair, just one minute, please, one minute, I promise.
Well, let's take a one, two-minute recess, thank you. Give me the highest call back to order. Colleagues? It was not objected to reconsider the vote. We're going to move the vote.
Mr. Chair, notwithstanding, you know, I'd like...
You want to discuss again the same amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, because I have, yeah, so notwithstanding, you know, that this amendment be placed back for consideration and what, okay, let me get legal verbiage for this.
Please, thank you. Take, go back to recess, real quick.
...
Committed to hold is called back to order. Colleagues, we are at the amendment that was voted to be reconsidered on line 26, page 5 of Madam Speaker Teresa Lai. And there is an amendment to that amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I believe everybody is in support of that. Senator Tello, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to thank Legal and the clerks for putting this together for me so quickly. Appreciate. I appreciate all the work that our staff here in the legislature has been providing to us throughout the week. Merry Christmas to them. Thank you, guys. Anyways, Mr. Chair, real quickly, it's basically the amendment to the amendment is to not strike out number four and maintain that the administrative courts or designee of the judiciary of Guam maintain its position on the board but shall serve as a non-voting member, Mr. Chair. And this would keep that institutional knowledge for the board, as mentioned by the author of the bill, of all those people sitting on the boards, very important. Also addresses the issue of the voting by the speaker.
All right.
Number, the voting number. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Does anyone who would like to speak to this amendment, to the amendment? I see no hands. Are there any objections to the amendment, to the amendment? It's to add, return the administrator or designee of the, wait a minute, let me get my eyes right, administrator of the courts or designee of the judiciary of Guam, restore that back, but now make them shall serve as a non-voting member. Are there any objections? I see none. Motion passes. Thank you, Senator. Now, Senator, Madam Speaker, on the, on the main amendment as amended, are there any objections? There being none, amendment passes. Thank you, my colleagues. My colleagues, we have completed now Bill 204.
Mr. Chair.
Madam Speaker. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to just ask the body for reconsideration of amendment, I don't see a file name on here, but it's line 24, page 9. It's the submission of spending plans amendment.
Line 24, page 9. My colleagues, there is a request to reconsider by this body, an amendment, line 24, page 9, has to do with the suspension, the submission of spending, spending plan. Are there any objections to this reconsider? Looking for hands. There's no objection? Objection, one, there's two. There's an objection. Okay.
I'd like to offer an amendment to the amendment.
Okay, but you want to amend, we have to reconsider the amendment first before you can amend the amendment. Okay, so are there any objections to reconsider the amendment, reconsider the amendment or that failed? There being none. Okay? We're reconsider, we're in reconsideration mode now. Senator Amanda Shelton, do you have an, you wanted to speak to this and maybe make an amendment or something?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Notwithstanding the rules, I'd like to amend the amendment to strike out letter A and to keep letter B.
Oh, okay, strike letter A. Does anyone have any, does anyone want to speak to that? Striking letter A, keeping letter B was the submitting a spending plan for the legislature. No one wants, you want to speak to it? Yes, go ahead. Senator Tello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the striking up, can I ask a question of the author of the amendment to the amendment?
If you can state your question, then I'll ask if she yields.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the question I have with regards to when is the funding anticipated to come into, into this fund, if it's, if the bill passes and it creates the fund, when is it anticipated to reach our coffers?
All right. Senator Shelton, do you, you to the question?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. I think the Attorney General shared with us yesterday or this morning that we can anticipate the money coming as early as the summer of next year.
Does that suffice, Senator Tello?
I'm sorry, what?
July next year.
July.
Summer. June, July, or August. One of the three months.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this amendment, to the amendment? Speaker.
If we are going to remove subsection A and require only the report, I mean, the plan, the spending plan, you know, per fiscal year, I would agree to that if we could change the fiscal year 2023 to 2022. So when I, as a sponsor, if she would change that, that way, when we receive the funds in July 2022, they will submit their spending plan to us for July 2022 and then every subsequent year.
Senator Shelton, do you, you to?
Sure. I'd like to further amend my amendment to the amendment to change fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2022. And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask that we just do that verbally. It's a, the change only of one number, so 2023 to change to 2022.
So noted. Are there any, Madam Speaker?
Just on the amendment, again, it's, it's just a little less opportunity for public input, right? And we're trying to get public input through the AAA. That's what the AAA is for, is to allow notice, allow public to have a say in the process. So this spending plan, according to subsection B, is going to be, at least we will get notice, the public will get notice as to how the funds will be spent, but they really, unless the commission or the council adopts its own procedures for public input, it doesn't guarantee that by this bill. So that's, that's my only problem with not, you know, going with subsection A, Mr. Chair.
All right. Are there any, anyone else who would like to speak to that? Otherwise, are there any objections to this amendment? Remember, there's two amendments to it, okay? Senator Beres?
Just a question for the proffer of the amendment to the amendment. So if, maybe some explanation as to why A is being deleted.
All right. Do you, you to that question, Senator Shelton?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I think we have letter B that provides that the council shall submit a detailed spending plan for the fiscal year and letter A that is requiring a general spending plan then to go through the AAA process. I think that we, we're covering our bases with this detailed spending plan in letter B. And it also allows for the advisory council to act in a more timely fashion and to do the job that we're in paneling this council to do while providing the transparency and the information that's being asked for upfront.
All right. Senator Beres, does that suffice?
Can I have a follow-up question?
Sure.
So what I'm reading, so if we are just going to rely on B, does that mean the plan is only submitted one time and not renewed every year? Is that correct?
Madam, Senator Shelton, do you, you to that question? The way the amendment is written, that's the way it was written anyway, so unless you wanted an amendment to it to have it subsequently every year.
Yeah, my, my concern is that because it's a long-term fund, you know, perhaps priorities might change over, over, over time. So a detailed plan coming out next year may not really fit the needs in a couple of years from now.
All right. Senator Shelton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think my understanding of this is that the, the plan that's going to be submitted for fiscal year 2022 will be for the money that is going to be spent that they are receiving in the summer of 2022, the first installment of these payments that we're receiving. This, the original amendment does not speak about a yearly plan, does not speak about this as a reoccurring provision every fiscal year.
All right. Senator Beres?
Okay, thank you for that response. I think that's maybe the reason perhaps of A being there because it allows for, I guess, more of a generalized plan to, for more of the long-term look at, I guess, management of this, of this fund. So I think that's why A was kind of critical. Maybe perhaps I can ask the, the proffer of the, I'm sorry, of the original amendment, if.
No, we would have to stick with this amendment first. And then when we're done with this, then we'll move forward to the amendment as amended, if it passes. Senator Beres, do you have anything else for the author of this amendment?
So let me just clarify. So the amendment to the amendment would strike out A, though, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's why, yeah, I'm wondering if that could be clarified.
I would, you, what is the, what is the question?
Well, Madam Speaker, we're entertaining first the amendment, A. If you, if you wanted something, wait until we get to that because it may not pass, whatever amendment is. We need to get past that one motion first.
Yeah, I think it's relevant because if, if we're striking out A, what is, what effect does that have?
All of it is relevant, Senator Beres, but we stick to what is pertinent right now, which is where the amendment is to strike out A. Do you have any other questions for this amendment?
Yeah, maybe perhaps what is the impact of that?
What is the impact?
What is the impact, yeah, of striking out A?
Okay, then, then that's why I asked Senator Shelton to respond to that.
Yeah, but the, the one who created this amendment is Speaker Terlahi. So I was wondering if, what impact that would have if we, if we admitted that. So, yeah, perhaps either Senator Shelton could speak to it or the speaker.
Either one. Senator Shelton, would you yield to that or would you like the author of the original amendment to speak to that? Senator Amanda Speaker, now we can move to you. Madam Speaker, if you can yield to that question, what is the impact of striking letter A?
One of the impacts is that the overall, you know, there's so many categories of how we, the money could be spent according to the settlement agreement and according to the law or the bill that we are considering right now. And this plan that they are going to adopt pursuant to the AAA under subsection A would have required them to get public input on, on which the options before them, they were going to prioritize for Guam. For example, treatment versus education versus, you know, the other categories of expenditures that are possible. And, and most especially the, you know, administrative adjudication law would, would put into this process a very clear path for public input prior to adoption of any settlement expenditure plan. That would be the impact by removing A, you remove all of that. You remove the categories of what we're prioritizing for Guam, you remove the, you know, overall, and you remove that, that very clear path for public input pursuant to the AAA.
All right, thank you. Senator Beres, does that suffice?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Now, does anyone who would like to? Now, does anyone who would like to speak to the amendment to the amendment? Proffered by Senator Shelton is strike letter A and also change from fiscal year on B 23 to 2022. No one would like to speak? Are there any objections to the amendment to the amendment? There's one objection? All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four.
Mr. Chair, can you hold on the vote so that members of the body can come back into the room?
Go for the vote.
Can you please hold for people to come back in?
All right, let's take a quick recess. Staff, check whoever's around and have them come back in. Thank you.